Comico County Council Legislative Session 2014-15. We begin each meeting with the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance for those who would care to join us.
Amen. God almighty, I do not need, like you come, I will return, amen. Do this today, our daily bread, and give us such assistance that we do deliver this trust to us. The end is not temptation, but deliveration through the Lord's thinking about our Lord. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to begin this meeting with approval of four sets of minutes. Can I have a motion introduce the open work session minutes from June 17, 2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the open work session minutes from June 17, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from July 1, 2014. Can I have a motion to introduce those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the open work session minutes from July 1, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Okay, next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from July 15, 2014. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the open work session minutes from July 15, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. And next, we have approval of the closed work session minutes from July 15, 2014, Part One. Can I have a motion to introduce those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? Okay, so, all in favor of approval of the closed work session minutes from July 15, 2014, Part One, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Mr. Matt Holloway, could you please approve the regular legislative minutes from July 15?
Oh, I missed.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Can I have a motion to introduce the, approve the minutes from July 15, 2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on those? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of the minutes from July 15, 2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, can I have a motion to adjourn as county council and convene as the Urban Services Commission?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Kramer?
Before the Urban Services Commission, this evening is Resolution Number 02, 2014, authorizing the repayment of a loan in the amount of $75,000 for the Fountain Road, Orchard Circle West, Orchard Circle East, and Frederick Avenue Urban Services Districts. On September 16 of 1980, the Urban Services Commission approved a transfer in the amount of $75,000 from the General Capital Capital Projects Reserve Account to the Urban Services Commission fund for the Fountain Road, Orchard Circle West, Orchard Circle East, and Frederick Avenue Urban Service Districts. The short, long and the short of this is that loan has been completely repaid now, and the recommendation is that the Urban Services Commission close out this loan.
Okay.
And the Finance Director certifies that the funds are available.
Can I have a motion introduce Resolution 02-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any questions or discussion on this? Okay, all in favor of Resolution 02-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. At this time, can I have a motion to adjourn as the Urban Services Commission and reconvene as the county council?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. President, thank you very much, members of the county council, ladies and gentlemen. Before going on with our legislative agenda, I, for those who may not yet be aware, there is a change in the agenda, not in the legislative agenda, but in the agenda for the open work sessions scheduled to begin right after the legislative session at approximately 10:00 PM, or 7:10 PM. The first item, first work session was a work session on Resolution 103, 2014, to adopt the Public Housing Authority's five-year plan submitted by the Wycomico County Housing Authority. Due to the death of the Housing Authority Director, Ms. Church, over the weekend, the, both the Housing Authority and Council President concurred that it would be appropriate to postpone that work session to a future date. So that will not be on the meeting this evening. Moving on then with the resolutions for your consideration, the first is Resolution Number 99, 2014, confirming the appointment of Andy Kim, CPA, to the Audit Committee.
Okay, and we'll go ahead and introduce this now, and then, Mr. Roser, we'd like to give Mr. Kim an opportunity to speak. So can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 99-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Steve Roser, and I'm your internal auditor. First, I'd like to publicly express my gratitude to our retiring colleague, Bob Stevens, for his tireless service to Wycomico County as a founding member of the Internal Audit Committee. Secondly, I would like to introduce Andy Kim, CPA, for nomination to the Wycomico County Internal Auditing Committee. Andy Kim is an accomplished CPA. His firm, Kim &amp; Associates, PA, is located right here in Salisbury. He attended Salisbury University and graduated with honors. Mr. Kim is a member of the American Institute of CPAs, Maryland Association of CPAs. He's a member of the Greater Salisbury Committee Local Chamber of Commerce, and additionally, Mr. Kim serves on the boards of the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore, Wycomico Hope, and holds a position on the Advisory Board for Warwick Community College. Mr. Kim passed the CPA exam with distinction, receiving the Elijah Scott Sales Award, and Andy Kim rounds out our diverse committee group. We are currently represented by members with backgrounds in human resources, information technology, government, and academia. Mr. Kim brings his expertise in public accounting to the group. Andy Kim has the unanimous recommendation of the committee and the Office of the Internal Auditor, and thank you for your consideration.
Yeah.
I'd like to have him go ahead and say a few words.
Sure.
I'm Andy Kim. I appreciate the opportunity you're hopefully giving me to serve for this community, and I'm looking forward to working with Steve closely and other members of the community. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so we've had a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Just a comment. Mr. Kim, thank you so much for stepping up and volunteering for this very, very important board that has a lot of value to Wycomico County and its citizens. So thank you.
Okay, all in favor of Resolution 99-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 100, 2014, at the request of the county executive, concurring with and approving the fiscal year 2015 rental allowance program application and grant agreement with the Community Development Administration of the Department of Housing and Community Development of the State of Maryland. This is an annual exercise. It's fully state-funded, and it is administered by our planning and zoning department.
Okay, can I have a motion introduce Resolution 100?
Excuse me, Social Services. And there's a Social Services representative here.
Okay, can I have a motion introduce Resolution 100-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, do we have any questions or discussion?
Well, since we have somebody here, would they like to come up and say a few words and so the public will be more aware of this program?
My name is Galena Bivens. I'm the Assistant Director at Wycomico County Department of Social Services. The rental allowance program is administered by the Wycomico County Department of Social Services, and it's, the funding comes from Department of Housing and Community Development. The rental allowance program allows persons that are homeless or experience a housing crisis and their near homelessness to provide a subsidy for them in order for them to continue to maintain housing or to seek housing within Wycomico County. They must have a housing, help them assist with housing for six months, and they have to be employed or have some means of income to show that they will be able to continue to maintain their housing once the subsidy is complete. If anyone is interested in finding out additional information, they can contact myself at 410-713-3913, or Ms. Velvet Brown, who is a housing coordinator at the Wycomico County Department of Social Services, and her number's 410-713-3942.
Thank you.
I was gonna say, we're getting $40,000 again this year?
Yes. And the average housing subsidy is about $250 per month for six months, and last fiscal year, we served 24 residents of Wycomico County.
So did you expend all the monies from last year then already?
We did.
FY14, we have?
Yes, we have.
So we desperately need this.
We've committed it, and so we're ready to start spending additional funding.
Great, thank you.
The need is there.
I'm sure it is.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, all in favor of Resolution 100-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Council will recall during the recent budget process that you set aside a certain amount of money as an economic development fund for the purpose of stimulating job creation and other entrepreneurial activities. The county executive concurred with you on that.
Matt, get one.
I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Resolution Number 101, 2014, thank you, Bob. At the request of the executive, authorizing the executive to accept a grant in the amount of $22,498 from the Maryland Department of Environment for the collection of recycling certain electronic devices at Newland Park landfill. That's not job creation, is it?
No.
Well, maybe.
Not maintaining.
There's one job in there.
Can I have a motion introduce Resolution 101-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions on this?
It looks like this is the first time we're doing this, because it says we have to do a new account number.
Sure. Lee Beecham, Wycomico County Public Works Director. We have applied for this in years past, but not in recent years. This is the first time they've offered this grant program in several years, so we're just, again, establishing the account numbers that we need to accept the grant.
But we've been collecting electronics all along.
That is correct, yes.
And so, did we have a company that came and just picked them up for, at their expense, or?
Sure, we, we have a company that picks them up. However, it does cost the county money for certain e-waste products. This will help us with, to offset that cost.
And if anybody has electronics, they can bring them out to the landfill?
Sure, they can bring them out to the Newland landfill. We accept them during normal business hours, Monday through Saturday.
Do you not accept them then at the transfer stations anymore?
We do not accept e-waste at the convenience centers, that is correct.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. So we've had a motion and a second. All in favor of Resolution 101-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Now, going back to, I had one page out of order. As council will recall, you agreed to include funding in this year's budget with the approval of the executive and support of his office as well, for certain economic development incentive activities, the first of which, which you already have underway, is the grant fund to offset the cost of the impact fees for single-family home construction. The administration pledged to the county council that as it had ideas for additional economic development activities, that they would come to you, and Mr. Strausberg is here this evening with, it looks like, a good cheering section of supporters to, to, to report on another development.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening. I'm actually here with the people who've done all the work on this, so there are far more than a cheering section. You'll recall that when we had originally submitted our proposed budget, that we had an economic development fund of $250,000, and through our ensuing deliberations, we, we pledged $100,000 of that fund to the eventual, whatever we call that, impact fee grant fund. It's got a fancy name that I can't recall right now, and that left $150,000 that at the time, we had no solidified plans for, although I did mention at the time that I felt that, that part of it would be appropriately used to do two things, to, to house, to prepare the, the library space that had been occupied by the, by the regional library for the adult education program that Warwick was bringing back into the county, and also to serve as a low-cost launch for an entrepreneurial workspace. So we, we assembled a team, reached out to the chamber, of course, reached out to, to Ms. Bursler, bless you, and to Warwick, and asked them if they could come back with a proposal with what they felt it would cost, first, to house the adult education program, and, second of all, to do a fairly expeditious but low-cost launch of this entrepreneurial center so that we could make dual use of that building space, which we obviously owned and which is vacant right now. So they're going, those folks will come forward and give you further details, but I can, I can briefly tell you that to launch the adult education program, the county would invest $25,850 in capital improvements. Andrea worked with the Community Foundation and received a $7,300 grant that will help with furnishings and equipment. The annual operating cost to house that program would be $10,008. So in round numbers, it would be a one-time expenditure of $26,000, an ongoing expenditure of around $11,000 a year. The entrepreneurial workspace would take about $10,000 to launch. The annual operating costs are really an unknown right now, but they have been estimated at $26,600. So you'd have another $36,000, 10 of which would be non-occurring, $26,600, if our estimates are right, would be recurring. However, we were looking at this as, as basically a prototype to say, look, you know, can we stimulate this activity further in the downtown area, and if it reaps rewards, well, then we can extend the program further. So with that, what I'd like to do is call forward the people who can actually provide you with more detail. I'm not quite sure who's coming forward, but we have, we have Ms. Baker from Warwick, Dr. Hoy is?
University, Salisbury University, Pekin.
He's somewhere, he's not here. Andrea Bursler, Library Director, Brad Gillis from the chamber, Brad, and Robbie, who's also here, have worked extensively with the entrepreneurial community. You're familiar with the Whiteboard Wednesdays, and they can, I think, articulate far better than I can, what would make that entrepreneurial workspace tick, what would really get it off the ground and make it vibrant. So with that, I'm, I'm gonna let them take the floor.
Wayne, before they take the floor, just a clarification.
Yep.
On the adult education program, you said $25,800 is coming from the county from this grant?
For capital.
Capital, and then the Community Foundation gave them a grant of $7,300.
$7,300.
And then the operating cost is around, say, $11,000. Where is that coming from, the $11,000?
Well, I'm gonna have to work through that.
Okay, that's, I just wasn't clear on that.
I'm gonna have to work through that. I've gotta, I've gotta talk with Dr. Hoy, because you recall that we appropriated?
Monies in the budget.
$100,000 in the library budget for the adult education program, so I have to go back with Ray, compare notes, and see how we can, how we can accommodate this $11,000.
Yeah, didn't we appropriate that in the Warwick budget?
Yes, we did.
Oh, okay, because you said library, you said library.
It's okay, I'll take it.
I'll second it.
Yes, we appropriated $100,000.
We wouldn't have a problem then.
We appropriated $100,000, and I just have to circle back to Dr. Hoy and just flesh that out. But what I want to counsel beware of this evening are what the, what the proposed costs would look like if we move forward with this. Certainly with regard to the, the adult education program, you know, we would like to have that up and have that running, you know, by fall. So there was some sense of urgency there. The entrepreneurial workspace can trail, but I'm, I'm really anxious to see the Warwick piece of this move forward as quickly as we can do it.
So this, this adult education, that's the one that was canceled by Warwick a few years ago, is that correct?
That's the one that went out of county, I think Talbot County picked it up, Chesapeake College.
They were conducting the classes in the library. They had local people they hired, but they were overseeing the operation, and so it's just not as good as if you have people who live here in another community, no key individuals to contact, and, and can do it, you know, very locally based, very responsive.
And, and is my understanding correct, before Warwick, Warwick took that over?
Board of Ed had it.
The Board of Ed had it. And when did the Board of Ed abolish it? Do you remember?
It's been five or six years ago, something like that. And they lost, they lost the funding for it.
Okay.
My question is, what is this gonna take, both these programs, out of the, what we've put down to stimulate economic development?
Out of the 150?
Out of the 150.
Yeah, I mean, you're talking about?
Around $70,000.
Around $70,000, so we're gonna have roughly $70,000 left.
We'd have $70,000 left, yeah. I think it's, from, from the Warwick standpoint, the adult education standpoint, the job connection here is that we're trying to rechain adults so that they can, can attain jobs in the community, so I think there's a?
And I find that admirable, but is that really economic development, economic stimulation? I mean, I guess my question, it looks like we're moving money from one thing to cover something else that we didn't have money for.
If I could.
Please, yeah.
Because we, we have the Job Search Center, we have the Job Search Center at the library. Okay, lower shore workforce pays, gives us a grant, and we keep this thing open pretty much six days a week. We have anywhere from 50 to 70 people a week who come in just to help, get help with resumes, but there's so much more we could do for them. We could train them on some of the basic computer classes, we could train them on Word and Excel, we can get them Microsoft certified if we have to. We can train them in interview techniques, we can train them to do the online testing that they need to do for some of these jobs.
And I understand, I'm not, don't let me interrupt you, but the point is, is we need to get the companies in here to be able to hire those people, and it seems like to me we're putting the cart before the horse, because we're gonna have qualified people with no companies that wanna come in here yet.
But one of, one of the biggest challenges that I keep hearing, Mr. Culver, with companies is that we don't have the labor force here.
We don't have a trained labor force. We have, yes. And so we, we've fallen into a very, it's sort of a perfect storm. When the regional library left, they, they left us the proper, the, the computer lab. There's 16 computers in the basement of the library, ready to go today. My computer guy would probably disagree with me and say he needs another week to work on them, but we can roll them out if we have to. In addition to that, we're gonna be adding a classroom that can be used for all sorts of training. Starts out with Warwick's adult ed piece, but it also will do ESL training, will do technology training. We have entrepreneurs in the community who have come to us and expressed a desire to teach high school students computer coding, which is the next big job opening, okay? It's the next, it's the next employment bubble, if you wanna say that, it's not really a very good word, I guess, but that's what people are gonna be hiring, is people who could do computer coding, people who can write in, in these codes, and all they want is the space. But the space that's down there now isn't conducive to them doing this successfully. Overall, we're gonna be able to impact about four different major areas of the community through this 6,000 square feet in the basement of the library, in, in what is really a pretty low-risk, fairly low-cost-per-program style of incubator. This is also very novel, this is new. This is something libraries and community colleges and chambers don't usually do as partner on this kind of thing. So all of a sudden Warwick gets, Warwick and Wycomico County get to be out in front of something, as opposed to trying to trail behind and catch up. And I think that that speaks very highly of the community, when you consider the Community Foundation has already given us an award letter saying, this is a really good thing, and we wanna do this.
And to just continue on what your same theme was, just today, I was reading an article that Maryland has been noted by the Chamber of Commerce nationally that they're the leading force on innovation and entrepreneurship opportunities, and so, you know, it makes sense for Wycomico to be in the forefront of that as well with the trend through the nation.
Speaking from an entrepreneurial angle, or education and entrepreneurial center, one of the things that we, when I say we, I mean all of our partners, Warwick, SU, SWED, the city, the chamber, DBED, MCE, Tri-County Council Hot Desk, all of these partners have discovered that entrepreneurs don't necessarily need a place to hang their shingle. What they, what they want is a place for interaction, they want a place for collaboration, they want a place for, to, to create as many opportunities to collide as possible. And, and this, this center, if you will, is one step toward, toward that goal, but the, you know, the greater goal is really creating that, that soft infrastructure around the community of an entrepreneurial sense of place, if you will, and I literally just made that up on the spot. But, I mean, the, the goal of that is for like-minded individuals to get together, and you have an idea, I have a problem, boom, we just solved it, you know, and, and just keep going with that. And, and so, this is that first time that I've seen in a long time, we have all of these cooperating agencies that are getting together. Just one quick, I can keep on rambling on this topic for hours, but, you know, talk about job creation. SU has had an extreme success in their entrepreneurial competitions. Every spring, every April, they have a entrepreneurial competition, the Bernstein Award, in conjunction with Shore Hatchery. You have 50 businesses that are saying, hey, I got an idea, I'd like to have money, and they, they create those environments, and they create those, those networks that allow both the funders and the people that have the ideas and the people that have the problems to all get in the room. And what we're doing is we're creating more and more opportunities for those like-minded people to get together, and ultimately, if we get five out of those 50 every year, we've done something. And if one doesn't win in that, in that entrepreneurial competition, they just need, they just may need a little bit of push, and all of a sudden, boom, now they're in Salisbury, they remember Wycomico County, they remember all of the investment that the community did for them, and they're, they're gonna stay here. That's really, at the end of the day, what we're looking for, is that person who's investing, invested in their business to stay in Wycomico County. Did I ramble enough?
If, I think council members will recall last year's session at the Mako Summer Conference where Jason Broadwater presented what they did, I forget the name of the town in South Carolina, but his beehive concept, it really, really took off down there, and, and that's really, that, that's really what this is. This is a low-cost launch of that type of a beehive activity to determine whether or not that particular model works in this marketplace, and if it works in this marketplace, we've got the edu- And if it works in this marketplace, we've got the educational anchors here with Salisbury University, with UMS, with Warwick. We've got the medical complex here. It just seems, from my standpoint, I looked at it as a, as, as a reasonably low-cost investment to see if that model works in this community. And so that, that's the reason I brought it forward too.
What's, what's the twenty-six thousand six hundred operating expense of the?
Andrea has all the, has all the detail for you.
What I can do is this, this is a budget summary. It's not etched in stone, but this is the best we can do, because this is a model.
Sure.
And I would be glad, should I just hand these out here? Okay. Pass those along. The top part of the budget summary is the operating expenses. Is that enough for everyone?
Here, we got it, we got it.
You got it? The top part is the operating expense estimates, and then the bottom is the capital expenditure estimates. And then if you'll notice at the bottom, we have taken out anticipated funding. We have secured seventy-three hundred dollars to furnish the education center. We're anticipating a grant of fifteen hundred to do the audiovisual part of that center as well. And are open to other grants as, as the opportunities present themselves. So maybe that will answer your question.
Wayne, how are you projecting next year, the funding requirement, funding needed, seventy-one thousand? Or is that gonna come out of what budget next year?
Well, remember that, that, that about half of this, Bob, is just one time. It's the launch, it's the capital launch.
Twenty-six.
The, the thirty-six next year, assuming this is successful, I would, I would embed the eleven thousand for the adult education program in Warwick's budget. And I would suggest that if the entrepreneurial program is working well, that that operating expense would be folded into the library budget. Because that's where it's, that's where the operation is gonna be taking place, activity's gonna be taking place. I think what we have to do is we have to track this and monitor, is it doing what we think, or what we intended to do? You know, does it have legs, if you will? And, and by the time we get into the next budget cycle, I think we'd be in a pretty good position to say, was this a logical investment or not?
Okay, it was said that there are gonna be four major areas that are impacted with this. What are the four major areas?
We've got secondary ed with Warwick. We've got what I would consider sec, K through twelve, where that we will be holding classes in these for primarily middle and high school students with the computer coding and computer training. We're doing that now. We have a robotics group that's been meeting in our basement for the last six weeks. And they've actually been developing a, an experiment that will be conducted on the International Space Station in a month. So those kind of programs are already occurring in the library, so we would just tap into that K through twelve. We would start to do enrichment activities along with their STEM training. We would have the entrepreneurial business connection, and then in addition, we would, we would broaden our job search and adult training outside of the formal education classroom. So there's.
The adult training, is it gonna be specific to a certain area?
You mean, as far as topic?
Yeah. I mean, I think, doesn't Warwick train for drivers, for eighteen-wheelers?
Oh, uh-huh.
Oh, sure.
Okay, would there be something like that?
We would probably look to develop, to, to grow our partnership with Warwick. And the things that Warwick is offering at their campus out there, we would look to see which ones are feasible and which ones would be productive to bring downtown. And then we, in addition to that, we would look to expand.
Doesn't Warwick do the tracking?
Yeah, they do, they do. But I'm, I'm saying something like that. For instance, you know, there are some people that are not even interested in computers. And, you know, they wanna be laborers. And I know there was a program, and I think the Chamber Foundation was doing it, with the flaggers. Is that correct, Brad? You know, the flaggers that stand out on the road. You have to be certified.
I've not heard of that.
Oh, okay.
Wait a minute.
You could be right, I just haven't.
Well, I know there's a company in Parsonsburg that's willing to hire five of them once they get certified. And if we're gonna do adult education and try to stump, jumpstart the economy, you know, we need to put people like that to work too.
And we, we would certainly be open to any of those kind of trainings that would come along. The need would be, of course, to find an instructor who would be capable of doing certification for some of them. But, but this, that's one of the positives to this program, is that there is an amount of flexibility and an ability to be responsive to the needs of the communities that are presented. It's one of the library's strengths.
Well, and, and I would like, I would like to see how many people get put to work because of this program. And, you know, if it's just to teach, you know, more classes that the public education is supposed to be teaching, that's not jumpstarting the economy, I'm sorry.
No, that's all part of the tracking that I think we do. To Bob's point, all right, if we're gonna continue this forward into another budget cycle, it, it has to justify itself. And that goes without saying.
And I think there's gonna be a broad scope, to answer your question of public courses.
I know Warwick charges for their classes. Is there gonna be charges for this?
It is our intention to not charge. The library has a policy, excuse me, I missed it, it's not a policy, has a practice of, of not charging for classes whenever possible. If we needed to incur fees due to bringing in special instructors, we would look at a cost recovery for the class. But our operating expenses are based upon, our function within the community, not necessarily within our student body. Whereas Warwick's model is the more students they have and the more costs they incur, so there's a charge for it. It's a little different model. We're hoping to not charge, especially for this first year. We'd like to really encourage people to try it, give us their feedback, and be proactive that way. Whereas I don't know if you've got any comment on that as well?
No, we, we're definitely ready to partner with you to make sure that, you know, you're able to fill in gaps that we can't for some reason, you know, where we can't provide the training, so. And it's, it's a very accessible space, the library. It's very easy for a, a certain demographic group in that area to get to. So we could even consider hosting satellite classes at the library. So I think there's a lot of possibilities.
Andrew, with regards to the Job Search Center that you already have in place, do you have a way to find out what the needs are of that population? Meaning that Stevie was saying the labors or flaggers may be something that they need, may be ready now at the table. So what I'm finding out, or trying to find out, is the persons who are in there looking for jobs, what, what are they really in need of as far as, what is their skill set? Has there been an assessment to find out that there may be twenty out of your fifty in a week that specifically are good in one particular industry or one area, and that may be the way to find out what is taught in that center?
It's, it's a very good idea, and I think we would definitely tie our Job Search Center into the projected classes so that we were making sure that we were offering courses that the community actually needed, as opposed to the ones we think they need. So yes, absolutely, we would be surveying, we would institute a survey in the Job Search Center. The individual who runs that for us is a former employee of One Stop. He's a job search professional extraordinaire. And I am sure he's gonna be able to get us that kind of information, should we ask it of him. At, to this point, we haven't asked, because we haven't been able to offer the classes. Now that we can offer them, we will start asking. It's a very good idea.
Yeah, I think it'll, they will build upon what we are trying to figure out what the needs are, and then see if we're addressing those needs as the people come through your door. My second question is with regards to the K through twelve opportunities that are available. How are those students gonna be identified? Or you've already said that they've started at some level. How would they persist?
We've been offering STEM classes for years. We have robotics classes, we have Lego builds. We've already, we've already been in that pool, and it's been very successful. And what we'd like to do is launch that a little further. The school districts do what they can do, but after hours, weekends, they're not there and we are. And so we offer those enrichment classes where people, they can apply a lot of the things that they're learning. We're hoping to be able to expand that. We've, we've been looking at some software we might be able to add to the computer lab that the students can use to help practice what it is that they're learning in K through twelve. That sort of, of enrichment beyond what they're doing in the classroom is, is really where we're gonna try and plug in to that.
So it's a self-referral, like it's been your practice in the past?
Yes, it really is a self-referral. We, we, because of our location, it, it looks best that way.
And I've been waiting so long to say this. I'm glad, you know, I think STEM needs to really pick up some steam and add art to it.
Absolutely.
Or ag.
That would make it steam.
I, that's what I said. It needs to pick up stea- steam.
Yes, and, and we would be more than happy to have.
Art, agri.
Art, makerspace kind of things where people can be creative in all things. Absolutely.
Could you explain this entrepreneurial center a little more about what its purpose is, I guess?
How about, how about if I threw their hand out? Well, that worked. Well, Brad, you talk and I hand down. Then we, we play to our strengths.
I mean, what, is, is this like a networking program?
Okay, so the, the space is going to be centric around, you're trying to pass up. Any, any entrepreneur worth their salt knows that they're gonna have trial and error, and trial and error. And so this is, I mean, you can call it what it is, it's an experiment. And we've, I think, been getting some traction and having what I, what I've been publicly calling Mom's Basement to hang out in is.
Does that make me mom?
Depends on how strict you are.
Don't make me pick up steam.
I mean, it, it's, it's quite honestly an unknown, but I mean, it's, it's there. It's already there. What we're, what we're attempting to do is, is put a little fuel on, on the fire that already exists.
I mean, you've been doing this there already?
Well, don't, don't think so much about the space. Think more or less about the community. So think, think about a, a soft infrastructure and third, third Fridays, whiteboard Wednesdays, e- events. And, and in addition to those events, having a place to actually host them, so that there's one central gathering place. What we're learning from other communities is that having that hub of activity, just goes back to what I said, it's creating those opportunities for collision, so that if we both have like-minded goals, then we can get together and accomplish our, our, we solve the world's problems.
What kind of events are you trying, are you talking about?
Uh, for instance, like a, a whiteboard Wednesday is literally a brainstorming session. And it will be all over the place. It will start, start talking about oranges and ends up talking about cell phones. And, and through that dialogue and through that brainstorm, you, you begin to pick up traction. Those, those whiteboard sessions, if you will, can have as much structure as you'd like, or as very little structure as you'd like. The, the community will, will begin to dictate that. Again, through our dialogue with other communities that are really pushing on entrepreneurs is that you can't tell them what they, what they want. They have to figure it out on their own. And, you know, right, right now, you're dealing with tens of people that are, are out there in the community that are residents of Wacomico County. But everyone that we can pick off of at SU during the entrepreneurial competition is one more win for the county.
So there'll be no charge for these, these folks coming in either? They'll be using this service?
I'm not, no, I mean, there's currently no plan, but as far as the itinerary events, excuse me, there's no plan to charge, but the itinerary of events, if there is a certain specific event that for some reason has an additional cost that we're, then yeah, absolutely.
Some, some of the other things, Brad, we had talked about too, were things like the Ignite and the TED Talks that, that had happened downtown a while back, possibly bringing in successful entrepreneurs who are willing to do sort of a masterclass with local entrepreneurs and allow them to be questioned and, you know, and, and maybe even contests, where that we, we brought, bring in the entrepreneurs and let them throw their ideas out there and see what it's like in the real world, and give them sort of that machine gun feedback that they need to put, to put together. So those are the kind of things that, that were, that came up.
So Wayne, with council's concurrence, what are we looking at, doing a resolution for our next meeting? Mr. Baker, is that what?
I'll defer, I'll defer to Mr. Baker as to what action, if any, has to be taken. Just to follow up on what Brad said, you know, again, I'll go back to, I'll go back to what Jason Broadwood communicated last year. You know, that being that you've got this entrepreneurial community out there that's, that's, that's scattered. But if you create a sense of place, if you create a known meeting place where they know, okay, that, you know, that's where I hook up with people like myself in a, in a business sense. It, it, it creates that interaction. It creates that, that sense of place where they know that they can go. They have resources available. They have people available who they can exchange their ideas with or flesh their ideas out. And it just provides that, that sense of place, if you will, where that's where the entrepreneurial, come up with a name. He called it Beehive, I think, down there, come up with a name. But it, 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 it makes it tactile, whereas right now it is not.
Well, this entrepreneurial center, will that complement the Hot Desk that's already?
Yeah, so that's going, going back, going back to trial and error. Hot Desk is, is a model that in, in some eyes has had limited success. And, and you, you can look at that and say, okay, why? And that goes back to all the things that we're talking about. There is very little chance for myself to be walking through the parking lot of the Tri-County Council Building. More, there's more of me of a chance to be running into a person on Division Street or Main Street than there is in that parking lot. And so you're, you're seeing more and more of those interactions, and, and you're seeing people wanting to come back into the community and back downtown. And, and going back to the Rock Hill, North Carolina, South Carolina example, is you gotta create opportunities, I'm, I'm not, I'm plagiarizing this, this, you gotta create opportunities for, for collision. And that's all we're doing here. So the space in itself, the four walls, is great. The location could potentially be seen as, could be better.
Sure. I guess my concern is that, I know that some state funds were, are, I should say, in place to support that endeavor, and I would like to see if this flourishes, what we're trying to do to continue in that same fashion.
Mike Filke?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, he's, he's got, he's got the programming. So he's a, unfortunately, I missed him as a partner, but he's, he's a great partner for someone like that. We, we can, we can bring, giving you an example, the startup Maryland bus from Howard County, Ken Allman. He, he came down here and they did a whole tour of the Eastern Shore, started in Ocean City, went to the Hot Desk and downtown. That was partnered through, like, Mike Filke. So I mean, the, the collaborations are there. It's just, this is one more thing we can do better.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other question? I guess going back to Stevie's question, is there any action, any action that's needed by council this year?
No, no, council already funded economic development, and the executive indicated that they've come and briefed you on the projects that they were contemplating as they're being developed, and that's what they're doing today.
Okay.
Scott, if I could add one?
Sure.
Uh, just an invite. A whiteboard Wednesday is August thirteenth, so Wednesday, at six P.M. And it'll be held in, in this space. And you can kinda get a, you'll begin to get a flavor as to what discussions are happening and, and how, how to go about it. And what we're gonna potentially do, I think, is a, we'll call a wall breaking for the space sometime in the next sixty to ninety days, and, and put that in tandem with a specific event. So invites out there.
Okay. Well, you know, I'm gonna go back to what I was saying. I, I would truly like to see the adult education portion of this, and I, towards some trade. A person that has no skills, but has the initiative that wants to learn and get a job. And whether that's a flag around a road, whether that's a drywall, and somebody doing drywall or brick. I think that's how we can help a lot of people here in the county. And I would really like to see that.
I can just comment on that. One of the aspects of adult education that's certainly emphasized by DOLLAR, the state agency that oversees adult education and that we're really embracing, is that opportunity to take these students from their GED into, be it a non-credit, be it a credit, additional educational opportunity that will prepare them for the workforce. So we don't see getting that GED as the last step. We are glad we have the program back, because it enables us to take those students, if they're ready, to whatever's the next step in their career path.
Yeah, and a lot of the jobs I just mentioned require certification.
Exactly, which is what we do in continuing education. So I see that as a huge opportunity of Warwick being able to take that program back, and we're grateful for that opportunity.
And I, I do know, one of the things I learned through the Chamber is that Warwick does a really good job of actually communicating to the, a, a select group of business professionals, and they say, okay, what jobs are, what do you need? What skill sets do you need? And that's actually what they create their curriculum around. So just heightening that communication, we can only do better. So just heightening that communication, we can only do better.
And, and Brad, I think it was the Chamber Foundation that, uh, received, uh, some grant money from Safe Streets that enabled them to go ahead and teach, like, uh, painting and drywalling.
Yep.
And I think that's much.
It was when Brad was in training.
It could have been when, uh.
The other Brad.
The other Brad, Bad Bellicho.
Yes.
And, um, but I, I think that's a much-needed skill in our county.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
Mr. Baker, so you're saying the council doesn't vote to approve or disapprove this because when the budget was approved, it was approved in the budget?
Right, and at that time, they indicated, came back to get council's input.
So county executive can do what they want with the money, basically, that's without approval, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate all you guys for volunteering your time to put this together, too.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
It's pretty exciting, thank you.
Sounds exciting.
Thank you, Mr. President, that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Okay.
Resolution one oh two dash twenty fourteen. A notice was given in compliance with chapter twenty-two of the county code and local government article that the council would hold a public hearing this evening for the purpose of hearing comments on, uh, lease agreement between Wycomico County and Renew Coles. Leasing office space known as Suite G at four oh eight Cole Circle, uh, containing thirty-one hundred seventy-seven, uh, square feet. Uh, it's used for the day-to-day operations of the Wycomico Partnership for Family and Children. Uh, it's actually a renewal. They've been there for a number of years and this will be a new, uh, lease, uh, for a three-year term.
Okay. All right, can I have a, uh, motion to introduce resolution one oh two dash two thousand fourteen?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And this is a public hearing, so if anybody has any comments on this at this time? Okay, any council comments? Okay. So seeing none, all in favor of resolution one oh two dash two thousand fourteen, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? And the president votes aye.
That's all I have.
Okay, uh, now it's time for a public comment, if anybody has any, uh, comments. Let's see, Ms. Ashanti coming up.
As always, I thank God for the opportunity to be here. My name is Mary Ashanti and I'm president of Wycomico County NAACP. First, before I make my comments, I want to thank, uh, Councilwoman, um, Prettyman in reference to her comments about steam and, uh, also about bringing jobs here. Thank you for that. On the topic of police oversight and accountability, we want to thank everyone that attended the July thirty-first meeting at Chipman Culture Center. I would hope the politicians and the political candidates that attended, um, on the thirty-first will continue to participate even after the gen- the general election on November the fourth. The next, uh, meeting will be August the twenty-eighth at Chipman Culture Center, seven o'clock. And the facilitator will be Charles Phillips from the U.S. Department of Justice. And, uh, is invited, I mean, the public is invited to that. Next, Wycomico County, uh, and we're still on, I'm still on the police oversight and accountability. Wycomico County NAACP agrees with Reverend Al Sharpton, uh, when he said that many law enforcement officers are good and honorable. However, we said those that break the law must be dealt with legally. There must not be an appearance of a cover-up. The U.S. Department of Justice should investigate deaths, police killings by law enforcement officers. There is very little confidence in local internal affairs or regional Eastern Shore internal affair findings. Especially since the, since the choking death that occurred by a few law of the, a few police officers in New York. That, which is still circulated, did not help the way that young African-Americans, uh, feel about law enforcement. We must begin to have open dialogue about race relations and citizens and police relationships. I know many times we, we, we think that, uh, if we just don't talk about things, it would get better. But in, in these types of situations, if race relation is to improve, if police, uh, and citizens' relation to improve, the, the work has to be done. And some, some, and some of the meetings, they may get hot and heavy. But anyone that know anything about, uh, uh, group dynamics, you have to, you have to work your way uh, from, from worse to better, uh, in some situations. And in order to go from worse, and we hope it doesn't get any worse, uh, to better, we must be open to dialogue. So we hope that we will see many of you on August the twenty-eighth at seven P.M. So many times, um, some people say, if we just wait, those people will go away. If we just wait them out, they'll, they'll yell and, and, and carry on and, and get upset and everything. And if we just wait, they, they will forget about it and go away. Well, in nineteen ninety-eight, um, uh, some folks just went away when three police officers shot fifteen rounds in McDonald's, uh, and nothing was done about it. In nineteen, I was reading my note from two thousand nine, I, I guess I attended a workshop and we talked about police oversight. Well, this won't go away. The only way this will go away is, is if I die and no one take up the, up the banner. So this won't go away. It may take some time for us to, to, to do something, but this won't go away. Thank you.
Any other public comments tonight? Okay, council comments?
I just have a couple. President Ashanti, I don't know if she wanted to mention the Back to School Fair, which is on, uh, this Thursday, August the seventh, at Salisbury Middle School. And I believe the time is twelve-thirty?
Twelve-thirty.
Okay. In the past, there's been many, many children from throughout the county that have benefited from the many donations that businesses have provided for the children, for ba-, um, book bags and school supplies. So if anyone's available to attend, um, that is on Thursday, August the seventh. Also, on July the twenty-second, there was a community meeting with law enforcement that was held at the, uh, First Baptist Church here in Salisbury. That was the second meeting, um, specifically with the community to discuss law enforcement concerns and to understand policies and procedures. And that dialogue will continue and it was positive. So just wanted to give you an update on that. And the last item, I wanted to make everyone aware that I did receive a petition, actually on yesterday, and I have, um, me and our public works director aware of that, um, that the community located at Kirkwood Estates and, um, Cook Drive are desiring to have lights in their neighborhood. And I have the signatures here this evening. And the intent of that is certainly to, um, improve the lighting situation in their community, but to deter crime and to ensure that their community is, uh, well-lit. So the, this is the first step in the process to secure the signatures, as I have received those. And then we're going to move forward to identify what the cost will be associated with this particular endeavor. So, um, Mr. Beecham has assisted in this capacity and we're going to keep moving through. So I'll keep council apprised as we move forward.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Kramer, would this be handled as a urban service district?
It could be.
Okay.
And there, there is history of, uh, lighting districts for, under urban services.
Okay, great. Any other council comments tonight?
I, uh, I'd like, are you, are you finished?
Yes, sir. Uh-huh.
I'd like to thank, uh, Dr. Hoy, the president of Warwick, for, uh, deciding to stay with, uh, Wycomico County College. I think the, uh, community's a lot better off for having him stay here and I think he'll service well. And I'm certainly happy that he decided to, uh, stay with us. On July twenty-third, representatives from your council and from the county attended a Mako legislative session in Annapolis to get a preview of what's going to go on next year. It's, uh, premature, but they're developing, uh, a, a plan for next year. And also I'd like to congratulate the Parks and Recreation for the USSA Girls Softball Tournament, which just completed and I'm sure it was very successful. And we look forward to, uh, hearing about the economic impact that it made on our county. Thank you.
Any other comments? No? Okay. Uh, at this time, it asks for a motion to adjourn and move into an open work session on recreation parks, land preservation, parks and recreation plan update, and also an open work session on the comprehensive plan and tier math.
So moved.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
We have a five-minute break.
We'll take a five-minute break and come back.